Bayport City Council Meeting, please join me in the
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Adam, will you please call me?
Mayor Sinors.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Here.
Councilmember Hanson?
Here.
And Councilmember Dahl is not with us this evening.
Alright, that takes us to the approval of tonight's agenda. Does anyone have any questions, comments, or changes? If not, would someone like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion approving tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Connie, is there a second? Thank you, Ethan. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Proclamations, Commissions, Petitions, and Announcements, the October Recycling Award recipient is Brad Hayes at nine forty-two Inspiration Parkway South, who will be awarded for his recycling efforts with funding made possible with a grant from Washington County. So thank you very much, Mr. Hayes, for your recycling efforts. The Stillwater area school district will hold a special election tomorrow, Tuesday, November second. At the, all Bayport residents vote at the Bayport Fire Department on Fifth Avenue North and polls will be opened from seven AM to eight PM. So that's tomorrow at the new Bayport City Fire Hall. And it is at the top of Fifth Avenue North, seven to eight. Uh, that takes us to tonight's open forum where we set aside fifteen minutes of the meeting to address items that are not on tonight's agenda. Uh, Adam, we do not have anyone in council chambers. Is there anyone on the line?
Not, no, not a mayor.
Okay, alright, then we will move briskly to our consent agenda where we will consider resolution, a resolution adopting items one through seven. The October fourth, two thousand twenty-one City Council regularly minutes, the October payables and receipts, the October building plumbing mechanical and zoning permits report, the hiring of Cheryl Groppi as the part-time office support specialist, the reappointment of Elizabeth Kelly and Warren Kip to three-year terms on the planning commission, the appointment of Erin Crowder to fill the vacancy on the library board for a term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, and the joint powers agreement with the Minnesota Bureau of Criminal Apprehension for use of their criminal justice data communications network. Um, does anyone have any questions, comments, or changes? Go ahead, Adam.
Madam Mayor, there was one suggestion change, suggested change to the minutes by Councilmember Hanson. Uh, that one of the changes was to clarify that Angie Hong during her liaison report, um, during Councilmember Hanson's liaison report, it reported that Angie Hong spoke at a separate event at the Fields of Harbor Glen and not the Toxentopics event. And then also just to clarify, uh, that the presentation from Angie's, Angie's presentation was other things that we can learn from other cities and, and her about maintaining water quality and water conservation.
Okay, great, thank you. So I'm sure that those corrections are being made. And with those, does anyone have any other questions, comments, or would someone like to make a motion to approve?
I hope that we approve the consent agenda with the changes that Adam noted.
Thank you. Michelle, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ethan. Um, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Carlson?
Aye.
Mayor Sinors?
Aye.
I saw.
Uh, we do have a public hearing this evening and it's the certification of pass-through waste collection bills and unpaid service charges, uh, to property taxes. Adam, will you please cover this topic?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, under Minnesota statutes, uh, cities are able to assess unpaid service charges. Uh, two of those charges this evening, uh, one are delinquent garbage bills uh, that have been turned over to the city for collection and the other is, any other unpaid charges under state statute and our ordinances were allowed to collect unpaid vacant building registration fees. Uh, there's two assessment lists, uh, with the list of properties that are on the roll. Um, we have received a couple of payments for garbage since that list was generated. Uh, we will continue to receive payment until certified to the county, um, that is due, the certification is due September, or sorry, November thirtieth. Um, the, I believe the twenty-second is the, the last day that we will be doing it. But I would suggest anybody, if they still intend on paying, uh, to get to the city as soon as possible and not wait. Um, then there's the one vacant building charge that is for the Graceville, uh, that is actually two years worth. Um, and there wasn't, there was just one correction in our previous discussions. The first year was twenty-twenty, um, so that was the five hundred dollar charge. The second year is twenty-twenty-one. Um, I think I misspoke about the, the number of years. So with those, uh, that list, both of those, um, the, if there's any other questions, we're happy to answer them. But otherwise, uh, yeah, there should be a public hearing held for those assessments and then the council can vote. Uh, one note, as I, um, you have in front of you, there is one contest to the, uh, the garbage assessments. Um, I've spoken with the city attorney and, uh, I, we did speak with, uh, the holler. And these are for actual, the end of twenty-twenty charges, uh, with Republic where the services changed to tennis. And the, it does not appear that the process was followed, um, by the resident in order to be eligible for the, um, seasonal exemption that is being claimed. Uh, that's not an issue between the city and the resident. Uh, that is an issue between, uh, the holler and the resident. Uh, the city doesn't really have any involvement in that. Speaking with the attorney, uh, there really isn't a lot of, uh, other wiggle room. Um, that's not a legal term that we refer to, but the, it's staff's recommendation to approve all of the garbage charges, including the one that's being contested and let the resident, uh, continue to, um, try to work it out with the holler if they so choose.
So, does anyone have questions on that? Or is this the proper time for us to ask the questions on that or during the, after it's closed?
Um, after, after the public hearings, close.
Alright, so with that, um, I would like to open the public hearing and ask anyone, um, in the public to come forward, which we do not have anyone in chambers this evening, but is, is anyone online to address us?
No.
Okay. With that, then is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Connie, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Michelle, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Okay, so now, uh, with that, we can have city council discussion. At this point, does anyone have any questions regarding any items on the list or the, uh, recommendation from legal?
Well, I think we need to talk about this. Um, we didn't have a chance to read through all of the notes that Republic sent us, which is a lot of calls made, it looks like, and discussions back and forth with the person who's objecting to their charges. What is the process that he was supposed to go through versus what you saw in these notes?
Um, well, according to the, uh, to the, the process outlined by Republic, he was supposed to contact Republic, uh, prior to more than two weeks to set up the seasonal exemption. It's not something that the city provides the exemption, it's something that Republic does, uh, as part of their contract with the residents and the, he did include these copies of these checks that he had written on, I don't, so these are just scanned copies of the checks themselves, um, that he had wrote on there. One was from August, September, uh, placed on seasonal hold as, as of ten-one. And then there was the, the invoice as well from, it looks like November. And it says, I'm on the seasonal of which I gave notice to, um, first notice as per Brenda. The, we spoke with, uh, the city spoke with Brenda from Republic and she's the one who sent us the, the call log. And it sounds like they discussed it, but that was not the, the process that they explained to him. So that, he wrote minimum of two weeks' advance notice, um, with the outline. You can see it's on, it's on page, the back of page three is where they outlined their, their process.
So he was supposed to fill out a separate form other than what he did on his check in the return slip for them to notify them that he'd like to be placed.
Other than writing on the check, right.
So he just didn't fill out the form that they required him to do?
He didn't provide the sufficient notice that they required.
He didn't provide what?
He didn't provide sufficient notice pursuant to their contract.
Well, it looks like he wrote the check on eight twenty-four and he wanted it on hold as of ten-one. So that seems like plenty of notice. Am I confused?
I, I don't think the timeframe was the issue. I think it was, there's a separate, you know, he needs to contact them proactively and actually provide notice opposed to just writing on the check, putting it on hold.
Right, so it was just a procedural thing that he either didn't understand or they weren't clear in getting through to him. So it doesn't really feel like it's his fault if he thought he made a point of telling them, no, I want to be on.
He was, he was on the delinquent, uh, list of late in two thousand nineteen and that was, um, I, I had explained that the city doesn't give the exemptions. Um, he was claiming it back then as well. Uh, that was the first time that I had spoken about this. Um, so the city's response is to contact, instructing the resident to contact the holler to set that up because we don't handle the building. Um, we, we are aware that he's, he's gone for most of the, the summer, or sorry, most of the winter from the property, but there, there have been, uh, people staying at the property. He himself is not there, um, but I don't know the, the trash status as far as when that's being used. Uh, Republic is claiming that they, the services provided so that the bill was, the charges were down and due. Certain fires and they certified it to the city as a delinquent account. And so as certain city ordinance, um, we, as a city, can put that as, as the assessment on the whole. We're not necessarily, um, it's, it's a contractual dispute between the holler and the resident, um, that can still resolve via, you know, contractual claim. But as has been provided to us, the holler maintains that this is a valid delinquent account. There was no proper documentation on suspension. They reviewed it, they reviewed the call logs, they provided the procedures that needed to be followed. And they maintain that they were, were not followed. And so the account remains delinquent.
So your recommendation is to continue to move forward with?
Counsel? Then, the ordinance doesn't provide that we have to, it, it, it's something that the council does. Um, for hollers, when there's a delinquent account like this, based on the documentation that's been provided and the position of the holler, that they maintain that this, this account is delinquent, that there was never a valid hold put in place. Um, it is my recommendation that we go ahead and assess it as they provided us with, with the documentation. If the resident still feels that this wasn't proper, they can pursue action with the holler.
Any other questions or?
Well, my comment is that I've dealt with Republic on things and I don't believe that they're very easy to work with. So I feel for this guy if he had to try to work with them and, God, I mean, obviously if he wasn't there, maybe they were providing a service by driving by his house, but he wasn't putting cans out if he wasn't even there. So I don't, I don't understand why they would think there's some service they provided, but it's just, it's such a piddly amount and it's silly that we have to spend this much time with it. But I just know what Republic was like to deal with.
This is the third year, uh, that this property has been on the delinquent list.
Yeah, and it's, it's really hard to tell from these notes what, what any of it really means. It looks like it wasn't until just before he wrote that check that he gave us a copy of saying, I'm on hold. That's when they, Frank, Romack Franklin, put out something and said, please let the customer know, blah, 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 blah. But we don't know if the customer was told any of that. It just, you know, that he put a note saying he let the customer know this stuff.
Well, it, it refers to contract. So seemingly the contract between the customer and the holler would have provided for, that, that's what they're saying is that there's. So then the next one, second next billing cycle then, is when he contested with Republic on the island on the seashore, which I gave notice back then. And there he did list the date. So, because it's, it's the one billing amount, or two. Two billing. It's the, again, the city has, you know, we're, it, it's an unfortunate awkward position to be. We're the ones who assess the fees, um, but the disputes between the, the provider and the, the homeowner, their customer. Um, this specific, uh, resident has had, you know, both with tennis and with, um, Republic. The, the dispute over whether or not he is, um, exempted.
So he hasn't filled out the forms for tennis either?
He didn't have trash service prior to, several years before, um, so he's on the current one where he's on there, um, so he's on the, the current charges.
So tennis goes it straight with him or is it only in issue with Republic?
The, the, it got straightened out with tennis, but he wasn't, because he's just leaving now.
Yeah.
So.
I guess at first, Michelle, I was looking at it your way, but then the more I think about it, if he's, this has happened to him more than one year in a row, then obviously he's not listening to what he's being told if he's on a late fee every time.
But we'd have to.
And, and my, well, just, but the other thing is, is if we open this, how many other residents are going to say, well, I got this late fee. I've got my checks. I mean, I guess I feel like we're opening it, we'd be opening it wide up here.
No, I can, I feel like legally we have to do what we're supposed to do with the assessment. It's just frustrating because I can feel through this guy and I know what it's like to deal with Republic.
Yeah.
And yeah, they put something in their little history.
And I agree with that.
Yeah, I can, so I moved to a pre- certification or pass-through waste collection and vacant property to property taxes.
Thank you, Ethan. Thank you very much. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Connie. Alright, roll call, please.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Carlson?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Sinors?
Aye.
I saw.
Okay, alright, so that takes us to our unfinished business where we have one item and that's considering accepting plans and specifications to upgrade the Inspiration booster station with authorization to proceed with bidding of the project. Matt?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, um, this is, as the mayor mentioned, uh, considering accepting plans and specs for the booster station and then going to bid for the project. At the August second, uh, council meeting, the city council authorized S H complete plans and specs for this, of which that has been done. Um, so those plans and specs are now ready to, um, go out to bid, um, to a general contractor. Um, the plans and specs are included with the, um, in the, or in the council packet. Um, the primary, uh, components of that are, as we've discussed in the past, the generator, a new motor control center, and then pump replacement for the three pumps that are up there. Um, again, I'd like to reiterate that this isn't necessarily a capacity issue that we're dealing with. More of a, um, being able to keep up with certain time periods of water pumpage in the upper water zone as, as we've discussed.
Okay.
For a while. Um, so this is pretty straightforward. Um, the cost estimate for the, um, for the upgrade is three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, the intent would be to, if we bid this project now, it provides us a fair amount of time to get certain components, um, to also plan for getting this in before the summer season starts next year. Um, as we saw this year, um, if one of our pumps sort of gone down this year, you know, we would have, we would have been, um, at a loss for, um, some water capacity or a lot of water capacity. And we likely wouldn't have been able to keep up, um, with water demand in the morning hours. Um, so as I said, the intent to bid this project this early is to make sure that, um, we can get the components in and get everything installed prior to next summer. Uh, at this time, staff is seeking approval of the plans and specifications and then also authorization to bid the project. Um, the intent would be when we get bids back for the project, um, they would come back to city council for approval.
Okay, any questions for Matt?
So you said it's not a capacity issue, but I guess I don't understand. Maybe it's just linguistics. If we're not able to reach the amount of water that's needed to be pumped at certain times, is it technically capacity? Or, I guess I will get.
Yeah, it, it kind of is. It's more of a, we have, we don't have the pass, we have the capacity to provide water for everybody. We just don't have the hourly demand capacity to do it. So from, from a well standpoint, we have the ability to pump enough water out of our wells. But up in that area, up there in the upper zone, our pumps are not big enough to provide the capacity to keep up on an hourly basis.
Okay, so this has nothing to do with the use, the extreme use in the summers?
It does, yes, yes.
Okay.
And that's the only reason.
So we will also be addressing usage concerns up there eventually, but this needs to be done.
Right, this would, this even happened prior to this year.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Excuse me. Essentially developed this process by looking through the Minnesota state statute because there's a specific section on, on what to go through. So at this time, um, city staff is just asking for, uh, approval to revest these lots by, um, approving the resolution so that we can be in the process.
So I just have a question just out of curiosity. If somebody from F G Brown's family came forward, I mean, what do they have to prove to, I mean, how does that happen? Where the family would get it back or keep it or?
They'd have to prove.
It's more of a curiosity thing for me, is your?
Yeah, it's really, yeah.
They, they were to prove their lineage, that they were in the rightful care to that, that plot. Um, like the first one, the F G Brown has purchased thing, or the last burial is in eighteen sixty-seven.
When?
Eighteen sixty-seven.
Okay.
I mean, these are, these are, it's more than sixty years. Um, the eighteen that we're starting with, we have quite a few. As everybody knows, Bayport is an old community, is always an old cemetery. Um, so we're not looking to just snatch it and get the message as possible. Um, but we are always concerned about managing the capacity, managing the, the space, um, best use of it. And so this is the process to revest them, the publication, we could do it three times. We have to go, and we, we have to practically try to look for these individuals or errors. Um, and if someone does show up, then we can go through that process, um, with each one.
More curiosity, but thank you.
It, it's kind of a fascinating, I mean, this area.
So if you want more background, so these, three of these, well, each of these essentially lots, one through six, had like one person buried in them. They likely bought them because most of them, I think the oldest person in one of these is like thirty-one, otherwise they're like, uh, kids who got buried who are like ten and eleven. So they probably bought the whole plot for the whole family, but then just never used it after that, so.
Interesting. Thank you, yeah.
Any other questions?
Something I can study when I retire.
Go for it. So. Alright, with that, we have two motions, um, and both will recall a roll call. So would someone like to start with the first? You might have an issue over. There are two sets of plots.
I move to adopt a resolution to proceed with publication to revest the city with title to certain abandoned plots owned by F G Brown in Hazelwood Cemetery as presented.
Thank you very much. Michelle, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ethan?
Now you guys are facilitating.
Oh, I was being polite.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Carlson?
Aye.
Mayor Sinors?
Aye.
I saw.
And the second set? I move to adopt a resolution to proceed with publication to revest the city with title to certain abandoned plots owned by John Eldrick in Hazelwood Cemetery as presented.
Thank you, Michelle. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Connie. Adam?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Carlson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Mayor Sinors?
Aye.
I saw.
It takes us to our second item on unfinished business, which is to consider a labor agreement with Minnesota Teamsters Public and Law Enforcement employees, Unit Local, uh, Chapter Number Three Twenty for January first, two thousand twenty-two through December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four. This is for police officers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Uh, as I've been informing the council over the last several months, we have been engaged in negotiations with two of the three labor unions with the city. One is the police department and one is the Public Works Union. Uh, the first one of tonight is the police officers. Um, we had a good negotiation, uh, it took several, several meetings. Um, the, one of the things to keep in mind as we've took, sorry, I was, ah, great. Um, hiring and retaining police officers is very difficult these days, um, not just for Bayport, but for a lot of communities. Um, so that was, that was something that we mutually, um, did discuss and, uh, perhaps more so than in previous years, uh, the city was, uh, open to suggestions or really listening to what the police officers, what was important to them monetarily. Uh, not, this, neither contract has much of a financial impact. Um, but I will go through, uh, just some of these very quickly, um, without going through in too much detail. Um, there are some changes to the amount of time that they get for training other police officers. Um, but the F T O training, that went from eight hours to four hours. Um, they get one hour of compensation time, uh, for every four hours of training. Um, it's training, and we have a small staff, but we've been almost in constant training mode for the last several years. Um, because we're, we're short, we, you know, it, it does have a burden that on the, on the police officers to always having to be training someone else. Um, the overtime, we did, uh, the city proposed agreeing to, uh, raising the, basically the comp bank to sixty hours. Um, and we were going to try to have that consistent across all three unions. Um, it, again, it doesn't really have necessarily monetary impact unless somebody separates. Um, but even then, uh, they are required to, uh, reduce it every year so it doesn't keep building over the years. Um, and, uh, so it doesn't really have much of an impact on the, uh, the, the police department um, as it does on the Public Works. Public Works, again, we did, uh, sixty, we did sixty there. Uh, the holidays, the, what we, one of the things we changed was for the floating holidays, they currently have regular city holidays, which is a twenty-four hour period. So if you work at any point during that, you get your, um, holiday pay. Uh, one of the things that we changed that they had asked for was changing the, they had two floating holidays, which are eight-hour days. Uh, typically for, uh, employee works, regular four hours a week, um, four tens, either five fours, sorry, five eights or four tens, um, that's, that eight hours would, uh, counters that. We increased that to a full shift so they can actually have a full shift of holiday pay, um, for that floating holiday. Increased that to twelve hours. Uh, the clothing allowance, what that did is that limited, um, their ability to use their leftovers or the remaining money for their, uh, uniform allowance, uh, which they get annually to purchase an off-duty weapon once every five years. Um, many of the police officers use their off-duty weapon as their backup or, um, they still need to be qualified. And once all the other requirements are met, um, then it does go, they're able to use it. They've been able to use it. They've been able to use it uh for many years, uh but this actually limits them to only once every five years. Uh we just thought that the clarification would be bene- beneficial for everybody. The, both of these contracts tonight, uh do have a three percent wage COLA rate increase, uh cost of living adjustment. Um I've looked at a lot of other cities and three percent is fairly common, uh and monetarily, there's not much difference. Between a two and a five, or two point five, two point seven five or three. And one more thing, I just wanna say, all of the, all of these are, were built into the preliminary budget. Um and they're, as I said, now that the the actual dollar amount uh is not that that much. Um when I can provide that for you if you'd like. Uh the other one, the next one regarding to wages is we added a, or we increased the physical fitness incentive from five hundred to seven fifty. And also added a forty dollar per month, up to forty dollar per month uh reimbursement for a gym membership. Uh only once in, since I've been here in the last five years, has anybody even applied for the physical fitness incentive. Um so that's something that uh in my opinion, would be beneficial for the city to encourage its police officers, um and all the staff, but. Especially the police officers who are, have a very physically demanding job to uh try to, try to get that physical fitness incentive. Um and the encouraging them to be physically fit. The fire department has its own uh facilities that, again, that is an important aspect to their job, they need to be physically capable of doing it. Um so that is that. The shift differential, another thing that um was, and actually this, the first part of it was the hours um that I negotiated. Previously, the night shift, which they get, they used to get fifty cent differential, they get fifty seven percent, fifty cents higher per hour pay to work the night shift. Um we increased that to a dollar, but also expanded the hours from, by three hours. So it was from ten P M to seven A M, uh we made it, they're on shift from seven P M to seven A M. So the shift was twelve hours, uh but they were only being paid the night shift for those seven, or sorry, the night. Um so I actually suggested, let's just make it a clean, they're the night shift, that's um, and so they they did appreciate that. The um, then the last thing with the P D was the education incentive. Uh we currently have a reimbursement um program that is fairly limited, um compared to some of the other cities that are surrounding us. Um some of the other agencies, uh but one of the things that we do not, that we did not have, uh that both Stillwater and Oak Park, some of the other agencies as well. Um is a, an education incentive to encourage the officers to get their bachelor's degree or potentially their master's degree. Um so that would be, um we, we do want to encourage the further education, further training. Um it has to be specifically in law enforcement, also applicable to their jobs. Um but I think it's, it's a good recruitment as well as retaining uh incentive. So with that, um were there any other specific questions on the police officers' labor agreements? I'm happy to discuss them or answer any questions.
Any questions?
Uh is there benefit to changing it to military time, because that just makes me have to do more work?
They, the officers all operate on twenty-four hour time.
Okay.
It's, I have to convert.
I literally had to go with it.
I myself do, I, since I was a kid, started on, um but they, that was their preference and the city doesn't have. If you actually looked at my time card, I reported.
Would it be smarter to just call it night shift or is that too open-ended? You know, so you don't have to change it if the shift, if we decide night shift is now eight to eight instead of seven to seven, you have to go change the wording all the time?
Um it, we, we would do that with an M O U between contracts, uh if there's something simple as that. The um, I I don't think, I'd have to go back and. Look at the other language, they, they didn't suggest that, um I think because we need some type of, so it's not arbitrary, but that there's some type of defined.
Okay.
Time for, time period. And they, they're the ones who requested the twenty-four hour time.
Any other questions? Well, it sounds like I, I appreciate you doing that with them and I, it is a challenge to recruit and to hold and we value. Department very much, and so it looks like you came up with a good compromise and. Thank you, because I know that that's also a bit of extra time and effort on everyone's side, so. Good, anyone um want to move forward with the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the labor agreement with the Minnesota Teamsters Public and Law Enforcement Employees. Union Local number three twenty for January first twenty twenty two through December thirty first twenty twenty four for the police officers.
Thank you, Connie, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Michelle, roll call please.
Councilmember Carlson.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmar.
Aye.
Mayor Sonars.
Aye.
I saw.
The next item is to consider a labor agreement with the Minnesota Teamsters Public and Law Enforcement Employees Union Local three twenty. For January twenty first through uh twenty twenty two through December thirty first twenty twenty four for Public Works Department.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um again, this one was with, also with the Teamsters, um and the, this one represented the Public Works Department. Uh consisting of three uh maintenance worker employees. And one thing I should mention, uh the chief uh did, I did consult with her for the Police Department as I did with Matt. Um Mr. Klein for the Public Works Department. Um the, the Public Works Department uh was a little bit different, uh they had. One, one of the items that they, they wanted clarified was the seniority, they wanted to solicit it had been the practice. Um but they wanted specifically in the contract that overtime hours will be awarded by seniority. Um hasn't been any issues with it, but that's uh, that's what they, what they wanted to clarify. Uh city did not have a issue with that. Um the compensatory time, again, we changed it to sixty hours. Um one of the uh, there's, their previous language there for cashing it out was a little bit different than the other, the police departments. Um it won't have a, a budgetary impact, the, they don't accrue them that, that high. They, they usually uh take as much as they can, um once they get to that point. The, the bit, this was a more significant one, the actual compensatory time uh of accrual. And this is one that we probably went the longest on, um as one of the last remaining issues that we went back and forth on. The, as I said in my memo, uh most cities compensate or provide compensatory time to their public works employees for being on call. Um they're here for the eight hour days, and then the other sixteen hour days, somebody needs to be on call. Um in the Public Works Department, uh as the first person in case there's oh some type of issue. Um if they, and so there's some type of guaranteed where they get compensated for being on call. Uh previously, Bayport had only been uh doing three hours on the weekends, uh both on three hours on Saturday and three days on Sunday. Um and then they were also additionally being uh compensated for other work that they had to do during those. Um it does include coming to check on the pumps, uh so every day when they're in, they're being checked, then on the weekends where they're not regularly in. Uh there's a city employee who comes in and makes sure that the water pumps are operating correctly. Um there's other minor work that needs to be done, and so those are, but they, they weren't being compensated for any time during the week when they were on call. Um almost as, as you saw in the, in the memo, the, the range goes, is from um. What is it, uh, I had there. From ten and a half hours to thirty hours per week of on-call paid time. Um so the increase of the seven point five additional hours, um by revamping that, it gets us to the thirteen point five, which is still at the low end. Of where the rest of the cities are. Um and there were a couple outliers, um I believe the city mound, it was twenty hours at double, uh time and a half. Um which is, that's the thirty, so that, that was an outlier, but the, the twenty uh twenty-five was still um common. The, so that, that is a, a significant change, um dollar-wise, it, it uh, it was incorporated into the budget. Um but the, it, it's a seven and a half hour increase per week for the department in wages. Um the other wage increase, are there any questions on that, if I need to clarify it more?
Seven and a half hours across the entire department?
Depends on who's being assigned on-call, um and so they, if they, they rotate, um it's usually like every third week, they'll, that's how they assign it. Um.
Why would it depend on who's doing it?
Well, depending on who the employee is, it would have a different rate.
Right, oh, the rate would be there, but the number of hours is what she asked, right?
Yeah.
Hours, seven and a half.
Seven and a half hours at whatever rate of who is on-call.
Alright, that makes sense.
The.
Does Matt have to be on-call? Does Matt have to be on-call?
Matt's always on-call.
That's okay, that's what I thought, I'm like, are you kind of a?
There, some of the things that have been done in the past, his um previous supervisor was doing some of these items, um if you recall, he lived in town. And so that, there was some tension over that between the union and the city, um over what jobs were, should be being done by the department head. Um I believe in an effort to save, save money, um but that's um, that's been changed and. Matt, did you have anything to add to that? Okay. Um one of the other aspects, or one of the other items regarding the wages related to the wages was the water sewer licenses. Uh we've historically been, uh each maintenance worker gets compensated monthly uh for maintaining, holding their uh water sewer license. Um this isn't, it's an important benefit uh for the city to have them all licensed. Um it's not a requirement uh that each of them be licensed, but they, we have very qualified staff and that they, all three of them uh currently do have those. Uh so each year, uh for twenty twenty-two, uh they're actually holding the sewer license the same. Um and then going up uh five dollars each year for the next two years, and the water is being brought up in line. Um to the thirty dollars and then again, five dollars for the next two years. Um there were no increases uh the last, the last contract.
Does that correspond with the renewal of like testing or just the application for the license again?
The, they have to go through classes.
Right, to get become licensed.
Yeah, they have to, they, they maintain their own licenses.
Okay.
Correct.
Um well, we pay for continuing education from them, and so that's updated. Um they have to put in so many hours every three years, um I believe it's sixteen hours um for each water.
Okay, alright, thank you. So it is ongoing education and.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, excellent.
This is in addition to our pay for the community hours, because it's just, they just get a little stipend for it per month?
Correct.
I remember ye- years ago, we went through the process of, of offering the licenses and working with folks and getting them, because it is of value to us, so.
Right.
That's good.
Um one of the items, uh the next item regarding comfort and safety, uh this was something that uh there's no change. But it, it specifically lists the other safety equipment, uh safety vests, jackets, pants, high E O protection. That was something that they requested, um it's something that we've been providing and all the other P V E that we, we do afford them. The, the vacations, uh the uh, this was something that was actually in the city's policy, uh but it wasn't specified in the, in their contract. Um which, if, even if this wasn't here, the city would still be doing this, uh because it was silent in theirs. Uh but that's if an active employee dies, then their, their vacation hours uh are paid out to the surviving uh members and family. Um the holidays, uh this one they had asked for uh last year, uh changing, changing out Columbus Day for Christmas Eve. Um it does, as you saw in the list, list uh Juneteenth, uh which was something that the federal government designated as a holiday. Um in twenty twenty, oh, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-one, but the uh, this, it's not currently a state holiday, it's a state uh. Day of recognition, uh the government holds, makes a proclamation every year. There was legislation introduced in June, uh that was left at committee. Um but I was informed by the uh union rep that there are plans to reintroduce it uh at the beginning of the next session. So if that does become a state holiday, um then that would have to be added, but it currently is not um one of the twelve holidays. The uh, are the next item, the uniforms, those were increased, uh twenty dollars for next year and then ten dollars each after that, that's falls past practice. Um then the last item uh was something that the, the, the staff wanted. Uh this is a healthcare savings plan that they want the city to, the city's a sponsor, just because we set it up, because we're the ones who put the money in. Um on behalf of the employee, but this is in the case of severance, uh the employees get half of their sick pay. Uh but instead of being paid out, uh money-wise, there, this money's then deposited into this healthcare savings account uh post-retirement. So after they retire, they still have access to it. Um and so if there's, they still receive their, any leftover compensation time or outstanding vacation that they had accrued. Um but specifically the sick time uh balance with, what they're eligible for, would then uh be deposited in this. Um and they, they, the employees did agree to it, um again, there's no cost to the city, um but it's something that they wanted to do. So that uh, that was included as we proposed change. Then again, just the, the three percent COLA uh for that, for those members as well. And those are the only changes that they had requested.
Very good, any additional questions? If not, if someone, someone like to make a motion.
Um I move to approve the labor agreement with the Minnesota Teamsters Public and Law Enforcement Employees Union Local number three twenty. For January first twenty twenty two through December thirty first twenty twenty four for Public Works.
Thank you, Michelle, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ethan, Adam roll call please.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Carlson.
Aye.
Mayor Sonars.
Aye.
I saw.
Again, thank you very much for working on that and uh to our Public Works team for their thoughtful negotiation as well. With that, it takes us to our city council days on reports, I will start, uh Connie?
Okay, um, well, the library board met, the, actually. On last Friday, the twenty ninth, the Advisory Committee for the Facility met with the V T R architect. Um and I talked to Jill today and they're gonna start construction, I hope, in April twenty twenty-two. And she said they're talking, like, would take about nine months and they're hoping for the majority of the time to stay open. Uh at least partial part of the library to stay open. They may be a two-week period, she said, where they may have to close down, but they're hoping not. Um and they're gonna have another one, well, she's gonna decide on another date, she sent out a doodle. That was new to me, what a doodle was, but anyway, to uh set up another time. Then also, um as mentioned earlier in the consent agenda, Erin Crowder joined, rejoined the library board, which she's a very. Positive grade asset too, but there's still one opening, so if anybody is interested on being the, on the library board. Like you to join us, um the, there's not gonna be any um in-person. Activities or whatever offered until Jill thought, maybe in January, they're just gonna kind of wait and see. And so, and then all of the grades have started to come to the library, which Jill is very excited about. Um and other than that. I'm not sure, nothing else new.
Their fundraising seems to be.
Oh, their fundraising is going, yeah, very well. Sarah Wagner is a, we'll go get her, she pushed really hard, so.
Great, good news, alright, Ethan?
Uh we did not meet, so I have nothing to report on the cable.
Okay, thank you, Michelle.
Uh planning commission has not met either, but I did attend that um Advisory Committee meeting for the library, Connie was unable to be there, but. I was asked to be on it as well, so I invited all the other meetings, it wasn't just because Connie wasn't there, I think.
Oh, yeah.
One of them was there, but yeah, so it was uh, I was surprised that, but they, I kind of thought more would have been happening on it, but it looked like the plans were still the same from when they had presented them to the. City eight months ago.
Was.
For the architect, like the.
Was what, master plan was developed.
Yeah, so they haven't, we're still needing to send out um a request for bids, so we don't have a contractor working with us yet. So it's still, there's some work to do to get to that phase.
Yeah, I think Jill was, um. Yeah, I think Jill was um, at first was unsure of the total process.
Right, yeah, that's her first time and, yeah, I think, I mean, things will move along, I just didn't realize that's where it was, was at, so. Yeah, so it was interesting, it seems like a great, great group, so. So now we're gonna have two liaisons? Um I'm just on there as a community member, I think, she just asked me.
As the facility, on the advisory facility, not on the library.
Yeah, not on the board, on just this advisory committee, yes. Cool, alright. And then I also attended with the mayor, the Washington County Heritage Center ribbon cutting. So it's a beautiful, beautiful facility, if you get a chance to go see it, that was, I think the next day after the ribbon cutting, it was free. I don't know how well they advertised that, but they should have, because it would have been nice for people to just go see what they've been working on there, it's, it's very professional. Very, very nicely done, so. And immediately across from the uh independent school district. Central, the administrative offices, so just in case you've driven by and haven't noticed, that's it's, it's just across the street. So, um but yeah, a nice facility and beautifully, beautifully pulled, pulled together, so. Um I guess that, does that conclude your? Yep. Okay, alright, so yes, I had that on my list, nice um ribbon cutting event. And then also I attended the uh monthly fire uh relief association meeting, which is their business meeting, dealing with their investments of the. Um retirement uh funds, so all good there, they have that meeting every month prior to their. The uh fire members meeting, so. And then they report on that information and conduct their other business and training at those. Um and then also attended the fire station open house, which was a beautiful day, very well attended and um a nice turnout, so. Great opportunity to see the uh, the fire hall and all the equipment and visit with the firefighters themselves. Um after our seven plus years in the fire hall, it still looks spotless. They got, the uh team does an amazing job of maintaining all the equipment and uh it looks beautiful, so. Um and then there were a lot of uh anniversaries of our firefighters and uh Josh had a big one of like twenty years. Um and then there were other members also s- celebrating different annual events, so. And that was it for my extra um liaison activities this month, so over to you, Adam and staff.
Thank you, Adam Mayor, um I'm actually gonna start with Mr. Klein this evening.
That's only because I'm Neil, I'm here. Adam Mayor, members of the council, um public work staff is obviously busy uh getting ready for the inevitable uh winter that's coming. Uh means mulching leaves, um completing street sweeping, winterizing the parks and all the equipment. And uh tree trimming, um we've also been um working on a fair amount of projects. Um the ash tree removal and tree planting has been completed for the year. Um I believe we removed uh thirty ash trees and also planted about forty six other trees throughout the city. Um we do have some remaining D N R funds which need to get used by June first of next year, so we'll probably do a. A removal and another planting of probably fifteen to twenty trees um next spring. Um the Sixth Avenue North project, um the curb and gutter has been installed up there. And we will be milling the road sometime this week and then also likely um paving it hopefully next week. Um and that should be all of it for completing there, um also getting paved will be the cemetery road. Um the Hills is Spring Creek, um water extension. The um first phase of that project has water in it now, there'll be four phases. Um and Derek Holmes is looking to put in about two houses yet this year. Um so we'll have water going out to there, well, water's technically already is going out to there, but usage will be um starting out there. Probably next spring would be my guess. Um the other project we have going is the box covert replacement project, that's where the um box overets are in those two alleys. Um we're having issues finding a a company to make the box overets because they're custom size. Um not only make them, but find steel rebar for them. Um and so it looks like there's a strong possibility that that might be a winter installation. With some of the associated paving and um landscaping work around it finished in the spring. Um the preference would be even if it, we have to do it in the winter that it get done, because um multiple people are calling about. When they can take their garbage cans um to their backyard instead of having to go through the front yard. Um and then finally, the um land of water legacy access, um that was installed. Um couple of weeks ago, and so that access is now open, um we just asked that people um use caution because. While it does provide access, um it's, it's not a pristine access, it's pretty much just a. Gravel ramp down into um the property, which is what we're required to do, um we didn't wanna. Go all out until, you know, we knew what the official plans were, so there is access there, um and um. You can actually now use the property, all the parking lot is striped, um so there's parking there and uh we welcome the public to use it.
Can I, can I ask, cause I was down there, just curious, looking, where is the access, the gravel?
So if you come off of Central Avenue and there's two um things into the. Um Bayport or the Anderson landing strip parking lot essentially, you wanna take the one to the east that doesn't have a gate right at the thing there.
Okay.
So then drive almost all the way down to where the gate's been moved and you can park right there. And then there'll be like two concrete barriers that lead into the um park area. There is a sign up right now, so you, you should be, when did you go down there?
Just this weekend, I mean.
Okay, yeah, you should, there should be a sign up down there, I'll double check, but.
Okay, and there, maybe there, I guess I was thinking it was maybe down further, I was looking for it further down.
Okay.
So that's, so maybe that's why.
You do have to drive a fair ways down to to where the gate's been moved.
But you can't drive into where the gate.
You cannot drive.
Yes.
You can drive to the gate, you just can't drive into the access, so the gate's been moved, so there used to be. Don't suppose we can get up.
Yeah, I just was curious.
The east half of the landing strip is now ours, so the gate was.
Right. Right, and I, and I, I went on the landing strip, I.
You probably didn't go far enough, would be my guess, it. It wouldn't seem like it's a long ways, but it's a long ways down there.
Okay.
So if you.
Thank you.
Here's, I don't know if you can see that, should be on your monitor in front of you too, right, the.
Oh. Thank you, Adam.
The, so the bottom here is Central Avenue, we drive into.
Come on, who's turned boy with us?
Okay, um this section right here is a, a long skinny section, that's, that's the landing strip. The, this where there were two gates, one was on the east, one was on the west, um they're, they're unidirectional, so you came down on the west. Go back up north on the east, uh the, the gate is uh bought right in here. The, well, the, the gate was moved to about here, uh but the access is. Five hundred, John, I don't remember, five hundred and sixty, twenty five, five hundred and twenty five, I think.
Yeah.
Feet down, um so it's, it, it's a good, good ways north on that landing strip area, um but there's, there're parking. This is all, all this is a stripe for uh parking, and so we will go to park right at, right at the entrance.
Okay.
Um if you get to the gate, you got too far.
Okay. Well, then I think I did go too far and I missed it, cause where the private drive is, I was even driving over a damn. Must have been sleeping, I was driving on the Anderson lot looking, I'm thinking, well, this is a private drive.
Central Avenue going to east part, and then it's, you drive in, you'll see the striping along the side, and you just maybe didn't go in far enough.
Oh, just look a little closer.
It's, uh we are making, we just talked today, we are making some more improvements to the ramp going down, uh to give a little more delineation uh for people. Um and the, we, we've been talking about uh how else to make it, again, a little more beautification, um right now is. We had to get it done and uh we don't know what exactly what we're doing next with it, but that next phase will be um.
Okay.
The, the next phase of looking to obtain funding for future improvements.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
You done, Matt? Okay, thank you, um that leaves me, uh the fire chief, uh chief admirer was not able to make it tonight. He had a uh personal loss, um in his family, um I hadn't had a chance to tell the, I know he has to tell people. Um his brother uh has passed last night, um so he's with his family, um and that obviously infects Jake and Josh as well. Um Josh did have the twenty and Jake actually had the seventeen anniversary, so both the, you know, um. Both the, just celebrated anniversaries, um for the fire department, um. The uh, I know they had to call the date, uh as of today was sixty nine uh for October. Um year date, year to date was seven sixty six, um that was thirty two less than last year. Um even with the, the covid changes, um so they are, they are fairly close to the history um where they've been. Uh a couple of the other things, um as the mayor mentioned, the open house in October was a success. Um they, they do plan on being at the village, lighting of the village green come December, as will the police department. Um they, uh. See, I think that was, that's all I had, one of the things that they celebrated as part of the open house was Fire Prevention Week, uh fire department. Um but if you can keep uh the admirers in your, in your thoughts, prayers, uh this, next couple of weeks, they're gonna, they're, they need it, and they deserve it. Um they uh, the fire department will be escorting um Santa at the village green, so more details will be coming out on that, uh so.
It's December first.
December first.
Wednesday.
And I think the, was the date changed from six to six thirty, is that's?
I, I don't think so, I think someone just accidentally might have typed that somewhere wrong, it's always been six thirty.
Cause, yeah, I think on the website it may have said.
Yeah, I, I pointed that out to the website.
Um moving on to the police report, uh Chief Eastman is attending to uh police matters at the moment, uh so she's not able to be here, um but. Uh she did want me to mention a couple of things from her report, um Officer Cornell, uh that she had mentioned before, the commercial vehicle inspection training. Uh so that's a, that's a valuable um asset to the city, has made several stops. Um the officers have been doing mandatory weapons training recently and they still continue to assist with the Anderson uh traffic control. Um for the pickup and drop off, that has been going even better, um it's, the, the parents have learned what the route is. Um the school staff is familiar with what to do, um so the, it's made the ea- made it easier on the PD. Um we are looking at possibly installing permanent stop signs um on the east west traffic, um so the. Second half and, and forth, right now there's north and south stop signs. Um but because of the buses, when they stop very close to the intersection, uh the sightlines become, you know, potentially dangerous. And it's only for that fifteen, twenty minutes uh the, twice a day, um but that's something that we're looking at, we have temporary signs for those crossing guards right now. Um but we'll be, we'll be studying that, continuing to study that, then uh, hopefully by the end of the year, we'll have a, a full report to the council to. To see if that's something we, we don't want to make permanent, but as of right now, um I think everybody's in favor of it, that's been involved. Um I know they were out last night uh canvassing at Halloween, um it sounds like that went well. Um as I said, they will be uh collecting for toys for tots and at the village green, uh again on December first as well. So. Moving on to the uh. Administrator, assistant administrator Taylor's not here this evening, she's a, she's with us on Zoom, but I will just give a couple of highlights from her. Her report, um she's not feeling well, uh but she is uh resting, she has the election tomorrow. So she wanted to make sure that everybody, as was noted earlier, um the school district election uh was tomorrow at the P A Park Fire Station. Um one of the items in the administration department uh that she and I were, wanted to report on is one of our employees. Carl Foyer, she was hired in May as the supplemental, so the part-time office administrative assistant or office support specialist, sorry. Um for personal reasons, she uh realized that she wasn't able to commit to the number of hours that she had hoped. And so she will be leaving effective November fourth, uh we have, uh because we just went through the full-time uh hiring position. Uh where we hired Connie Larson, she, uh there, there were a couple of the candidates that were interested, and so we reached out to one of them, who was kind of the runner-up. Um and we were very fortunate to have a very uh good applicant pool candidates, um she was interested in the part-time. So that was on the agenda tonight uh to hire her, um and so she will get several days of Cara, actually the overlapping. Um of that and if we can get that up and running, uh that would definitely is an asset or a benefit to the administrative team. But we were very sad to lose Cara, um she said she, you know, would be willing to help out if we ever needed anything, um so we, we will miss her. But she, she was the, take care of herself, um her family, so. Um a couple of the other things that Sarah wanted to mention, um the vacant seat is still open on the planning commission. And so as was mentioned, um if you have any interest, please contact the city or go to the city's website and get information on that and fill out the application. The fall edition or a new edition of the e-news uh letter will be coming out, uh hopefully by the end of the month, is our plan. And then a, another print edition uh will be coming out at the end of the year, um so look for those and both your email and your mailbox. Couple of other things that I just wanted to mention, the speed limit, as Matt mentioned, the speed limit signs, um or. As Matt's been working on, uh speed limit signs were, we didn't expect to be able to obtain them as fast as we did. Um but we were notified that they will be going in uh later this week, it was, it was, it keeps getting moved around, so we don't have a specific date. Wednesday's the current in, in installation date, um if you recall, there's thirty eight signs. Uh so that's, the, the PD's been handing out, um some of their stops, they've been handing out flyers or notification pamphlets. Or it's a sheet of paper with the information on it, um I'm sure with the, a notice, they've been notifying people. Um about the speed limit change, uh trying to educate them, I have a uh press release that I have ready to send out. Um that I was just having G P S men review, and once the signs are up, I mean, it's, it's in effect now. We're not obviously issuing any, any citations before the signs are up, but as soon as the signs are up, it, the, the police are enforcing traffic in general. So as part of their stops, they are in educating people on the change, uh we will be having in uh. Uh for the press release go out as well, it was posted on our website and the e-news or the email blast. Um just another reminder about the speed limit change, and then in the newsletter, about the e-newsletter, um and probably the print newsletter as well. Um there'll be reminders as well about this speed limit change, so.
Can you post something on the city's Facebook page about it too before the signs go up, so we can try to get it out before it's like, what? Cause people don't pay attention to our meetings as much as maybe.
Yes, so there'll also be, so the social media posts.
Yeah, okay, great.
Um those can be shared. Um one of the, I, I, uh, one of the other items that I wanted to report on was last week, I attended the Inspiration Foundation. The Stewardship Foundation meeting, um it was our second meeting as a board, um unfortunately, councilmember Dahl was not able to attend. Uh but we had a very productive meeting and we looked at several different uh, different options as to how the foundation should move forward. Um just for everybody's information, uh back in two thousand and five, or shortly after when the association was created after. There were enough residents, um they took on the prairie maintenance role, uh and the foundation was not actually formally created. Until two thousand and fifteen, when the developer at that time wanted to create the foundation, um that is called for in the master declaration. And that was what the, the previous action that the council had voted on, approved the Hardlock Incorporation, the bylaws. Um and it was filed with the state, it was registered as a, a five oh one C four nonprofit entity. And a year later, it was involuntarily dissolved for not renewing, and so since then, there hasn't been a foundation, but the. Association continues to collect their land, because the land conservation fees and execute the, the prairie maintenance. Um and they, they execute their own education and, you know, they have uh info- information on the prairie and, uh things just within their H O A. Uh one of the items that we, we discussed um the other night was, is the foundation need to be a separate entity. Um so that's something that we're, we're actually, we decided to hire and partially at the direction of the city attorney, and. Uh to engage with an independent third-party attorney who handles nonprofits, um that way the city's not putting the bill for the. For the foundation, um because that, that was never the, the intention, um and discuss with them what, what our options are. If there are any changes that can be made, either to the master declaration or just to the foundation format itself. or just to the foundation format itself. Um it, the previous documents were incredibly complicated, I think it was overcomplicated than what it needed to be to ensure that the, the management is done for the prairie, which is obviously was the number one goal. Um but also that, you know, there's not an undue burden on anybody, anyone, including the city. Um so those are the things that we're looking, looking at, um and will continue to, I'll continue to keep the council updated as well. I'm sure Councilmember Dahl, um in his resident role. We also on November tenth, next mo, next Wednesday, just again, I mentioned before, uh we have our seven-year contract review um for the fire department service agreement with the other communities, um so the mayor and I will be attending that. And we will let you know how that goes and give you, give the council an update after that. Other than that, just any questions?
Any questions for Adam?
No.
Was he on?
Always is.
Alright, uh any other announcements or?
Well, I guess I'd just like to, a couple of thank yous. Um first to the Bayport Fire Department who came to Pony Preschool during Fire Prevention Week. Three of them took time out of their day and spent about an hour with the kids and they did a really good job and the kids enjoyed it. And then last night, um the police department was happy, they were very um visible. And so it was nice, cause there was a lot of, not as many in the past, but there was still a lot of people out, a lot of traffic going by. Cars, so it was nice to have them out and about, so I guess just wanna thank our departments.
Nice, thanks for doing that. It's, and I was excited, I heard from the B C I L today regarding, and it's nice to have uh the Letty of the Green back on December first that evening, so look forward to having people join.
What time did they tell you it started?
I have six thirty to eight.
Okay, that's what I thought too. I thought, I think the website's just messed up.
I, in my report, I listed at six.
People get there early, they read that.
We'll get the fire.
Make sure the fire's going, yeah.
Come on, man.
Okay, well with that, I think we could have concluded our business, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'm over adjourned.
Thank you, Michelle, through a second.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Meeting adjourned.